We're gonna go ahead and call our meeting to order. This will be the Palaca City Commission's February 22nd, 2018, Commission Meeting. At this time, we'd like to welcome each of you here today. We're gonna have an application by Reverend Dan Phillips, Associate Pastor of Francis Baptist Church. Seeing that he's not here, we're gonna go ahead and ask Commissioner Campbell if you would lead us in prayer, and Mr. Folsen, would you lead us in the pledge? Everyone please stand by.
Dear Heavenly Father God, we thank you for this day, your brand-new mercy that you bestowed upon us, God. We ask as we go forth with this meeting, God, that we conduct this meeting as a reflection of you, that we're able to come to deliberation and speak and move this city forward, God. We ask that you bless everyone that is present today, bless their households. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. To the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which he stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown.
Present.
Commissioner Foreman.
President.
Commissioner Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner McCaskill.
Here.
All members are present at the county forum. You have a forum.
Thank you. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes from the February 8th meeting, and also from the February 12th workshop? The most important 22nd all, in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Public recognitions and presentations. First up is the proclamation for the Azalea Festival Days, March 2nd through 4th. We have representatives from downtown Palaca here today. See, it was animal work time. Yes, your special ladies with you also today?
Yes, I do.
You wanna introduce them as they come up?
Yes, I would.
Just before we get proclamation.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I would like to introduce you to five out of the seven, the 72nd Miss Florida Azalea Festival Queens. We're gonna start from the smallest one. Joyce Rayburn, petite miss. Olivia Register, tiny miss. Miss Gabrielle Alford, little miss. Destiny Long, junior miss. And our oldest is Cassidy Chamberless, Miss Azalea. We have baby and toddler. We just thought this would be a bit much for them tonight, so you'll be seeing them, but not today. Ladies and gentlemen, we had our pageant last Saturday. It was fabulous. We do that once a year. These young ladies will be representatives of Putnam County and the surrounding areas. If you're having a book reading, book signing, photo shoot, whatever it is, opening up a business, you need someone to do a commercial for your business, please reach out to these young women. They need to do things in the community so that you know that they're there and you can use them to your disposal as far as your businesses are concerned. Thank you so very much. Ladies, thank you.
Proclamation reads as follows. Whereas on March 22nd, 1936, the Palaca Board Committee held a local flower and plant show at the Ravine Gardens, which was named the Azalea Festival, at the suggestion of Miss Susie Walton, a member of the committee. Also on March 22nd, 1936, thousands of shriners from all over the southeastern United States participated in the first annual All-Florida Shrine Day, also held at the Ravine Gardens. This event was such a huge success that it returned to the Ravine Gardens the following year and was held in conjunction with the Junior Chamber Commerce's J.C.'s Days and Southeastern Conference, also held at the Ravine Gardens. Whereas in 1938, the J.C.'s changed the name of their event to the Azalea Festival, again held at the Gardens in conjunction with All-Florida Shrine Day. The event included a pageant. On February 20th, 1938, Miss Geraldine Meyer of St. Petersburg was chosen from a field of 10 contestants and crowned as the first Azalea Queen. And whereas throughout the years, 63 women have been crowned Azalea Queen or Miss Azalea, as the title was come to be known. The pageant, a qualifier for the Miss Florida Pageant, has seen two of its queens crowned Miss Florida. And one, Miss Taragon Holland, was also crowned Miss America in 1997. And whereas throughout the years, the J.C.'s Azalea Festival always held in early March in conjunction with Shrine Day, and the Azalea Queen Pageant grew and changed and was held annually except for three years during World War II and six years during the 1950s, until the Palaca J.C.'s was disbanded after the 1996 Azalea Festival. And whereas in 1997, the Putnam County Scholarship Foundation took over the sponsorship of the festival and kept the tradition of the festival through 2003's festival season. 2005, the Palaca Main Street Board of Directors trademarked the name and organized the 59th Annual Palaca Azalea Festival. 2018, Palaca Azalea Festival organized by Downtown Palaca Inc., March the 72nd Festival held, which makes it one of the oldest festivals in Florida. Now therefore, I tarot here together with the members of the Palaca City Commission and hereby proclaim March 2nd through 4th, 2018, as the 72nd Annual Azalea Festival Days in the city of Palaca. We urge all citizens to take part in planned activities, fun and festivities of this one of Florida's oldest and most time-honored festivals to thank its organizers, both past and present, for their hard work and contributions to our community's history and heritage. And witness wherever I'm here to set my hand and constantly be a fix to seal the city of Palaca, Florida on this 22nd day of February in the year of our Lord, 2018. Gerald Hill, Mayor, Mayor Lawson Brown, Rufus Ford, Justin Campbell, and Tammy McCaskill, Commissioners, our entertaining motion. This is motion for the 22nd all, in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Next up, we have employee recognitions. First up is Mr. Matt Reynolds. So Matt, got your recognition? Mr. Reynolds is the shortest member of the Palaca City staff here in Palaca. Next to Chief Grimes, they make up a heck of a backcourt for us. But this plaque reads as follows. Presented to Matthew D. Reynolds, Finance Director, Palaca, Florida, September 7th, 2009 to February 23rd, 2018. Inroom City Manager, September 23rd, 2017 to February 14th, 2018. With sincere appreciation for eight years of dedicated public service and leadership to the citizens, officials, and staff of the city of Palaca, Florida. Palaca City Commission, February 22nd, 2018. And before we present this to Matt, I've gotta say, Matt has done a wonderful job for us. He is the guru of numbers. He has an institutional knowledge of this organization, and he's one of our young people who worked his way up from the bottom. And so we thank him for his service. We wish him the best at the county. We know you're not very far away, and we appreciate you. So again, Matt Reynolds, thank you.
I just wanna thank, you know, everyone here, City Commission, Mr. Folsen, prior City Managers, all the city staff. Couldn't have done it without everybody, you know, that was just part of the team, and that's the way I've always viewed it, you know. So I've always wanted to do the best I could for the city and the citizens of Palaca. And I really wanna thank City Commissioners for, you know, the opportunities they've given me. You know, without you guys, without the citizens of Palaca, I wouldn't be where I am at, and I'm forever grateful for that. And I'm not gonna forget where I came from. So I've said it many times, just a phone call away, and happy to help in any way that I can, because I really wanna see the city of Palaca and Putnam County do well. Thank you, guys.
Can you count us for the commission?
I gotta say, Matt is, I enjoyed working with Matt over the past eight years for having him, or actually over the past three years, on the commission. You've served the city well. You've always shown dedication. What I like most about Matt, he's a very, very humble person. He's got a lot of versatility. Matt, not only just working on it, but he's very well versed in technology and as well as his finance background. So Matt, again, I certainly hope that you continue to work well up there while you did, while you were here at the city, and continue to strengthen that foundation. Thanks for all you've done for the city of Palaca.
I'd like to say, as well, kinda piggyback but not repeat, what was already stated. I wanted to come from a personal note. Thank you for always being available to me, every issue that I brought forward to you. You always had a resolution to it, and if you didn't, you had the proper chance of getting that, which in terms made me be able to better serve this city and the city commission. So I'm forever grateful for you. I'm not saying goodbye at all. I'm just saying, go ahead and take the next step. But as you said, I know you won't forget where you come from. Thank you.
I really would miss you, because I probably am the worst person with electronics. And I'll be told you. But I watch you grow, and I'm very happy for you, and I wish you all the luck in the world. And that voice will still be there when we wanna get together and we need you. And we always see you.
Also, I wanna say thank you to Matt for your community. I don't know if you guys know if you log on now, if you bring my laptop right, but I'm gonna miss you, and I appreciate you always being there.
You'll hear from me.
I wanna say, I've gotten to know Matt over a short period of time. I actually called Palaca once before by the dog, and I remember the conversation I had with Matt. I remind you constantly of that one phone call conversation. And he's still the same guy. He's always helpful. He knows the number. He has a passion for his community. I wish him well. It is very sweet. I'm gonna miss him. We've had so much dialogue these last couple of days. He's helped us with the city. I know he's going to help the city, and we hope for it as well. I'm excited about the opportunity for you, but I am gonna miss you as well. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Matt does a little bit of everything. He's a jack-of-all-trades, and he's mastering a lot. He's mastering a lot, so I'm appreciative of you, Matt. I will always appreciate you, always, always.
And for those who don't know, Matt also is the unofficial IT Director of the city.
Right.
He has fixed every computer problem we've had. Whenever there was retirement or replacement of an IT person throughout the city, Matt's the one person who can do it. And so besides just working the budget, he also works the computers and everything else around here. So Matt, we're gonna miss you. We're not gonna say goodbye, because you're just moving into a different place. And one thing that's great about Palaca is there's opportunity for people to grow. Matt's a shining example for you young people of what happens when you come back home after you've gone off and got your education. He came back to Palaca. We recognized his abilities, so did the county, and he's continuing to grow within this community. And one day, we look forward to seeing him actually leaving this county forward as an administrator and what other capacities God may have for him. But we thank you, and we're looking to mortuary things out of you. We also wanna make sure we recognize Planning Director Thad Crowe. For seven years of service, he's retiring as well. Mr. Crowe's not here with us today, but we also have a plaque for him. He's here. Oh, Mr. Crowe, I get to give my speech now? This is presented to Thad Crowe, AICP, Planning Director, February 23rd, 2011 to March 6th, 2018. With sincere appreciation for seven years of dedicated public service and leadership to the citizens, officials, and staff of the city of Palaca, Florida. Palaca City Commission, February 22nd, 2018. For those of you who don't realize what Planning Director does, that Thad is a part of the organization that sets the vision and helps when new businesses wanna come in. And one of the things that he has done is he's set a standard of how he wants Palaca to look. And so he has been instrumental in a lot of the new businesses coming in, the landscape and those things that take place with those businesses. He runs a building zoning department over there, and he's been with us. And he's gonna retire from the city of Palaca after seven years, and we wanna thank him for his dedicated service in this community.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's very kind of you, and unexpected. It's been a great run, and I appreciate the day of service to the city. Built a lot of great relationships here, and got to meet a lot of really nice people, and it's been all very positive. Thank you all very much.
Our next presentation is by someone who's probably retired from three jobs throughout the years. But I can tell you, this next person that we have coming up is just a wonderful person. We've got a Black History presentation coming up. And I wanna bring up none other than our former state representative, great attorney, great citizen of this community, another shining example, although he's from that southern end of Crescent City, but he's a shining example of what Putnam County has to do when you really put your mind to it. Once an elite basketball player over in Crescent City, but he's also had the opportunity to become an attorney, a school district attorney. He went on to represent us in the Florida Legislature, where he was the Chair of Educational Appropriations. But I think one of the things that he's been able to do is take St. John's River State College to the next level. And he has brought his expertise into place. And I think Mr. Holmes will attest, the commitment of Joe Pickens has been a wonderful thing for this community. And he's gonna come forward and do a Black History presentation. And as he comes forward with that presentation, I'll say a couple of words and turn it over to you.
All right, well, thank you. I appreciate, this is really very personal to me, and so I appreciate the mayor inviting me. Actually, the mayor's and mine friendship really started out of what really was conflict over a decision that we made at the college regarding an athletic program. And so the Collier Blocker recognition and the Collier Blocker scholarships that are offered at the college really came out of that. And so it's one of the real examples to me that I think, when good people start with conflict, but they're really good people inside, sometimes it can create the strongest bonds and friendships that are imaginable. I think that's what's happened with me and with the mayor.
So Collier Blocker was an opportunity for two people that cared, who had the same mission in mind, and just different roads to get to the same place. And it ended up being what I think is a very beneficial and sustaining part of education overall, particularly for minority students within this community. I wanna talk a little bit about Black History as we start out. And so Black History started out with Dr. Carter G. Woodson in 1947. It was Negro Achievement Week, and it was an opportunity, after the Emancipation Proclamation, when slavery ended, to really celebrate the accomplishments of African-Americans throughout this country. That event, Negro Achievement Week, eventually became Black History Month, which we celebrate every February. And so it continued on from there. And so tonight, we get an opportunity to truly celebrate many of the great things that happened, and we're gonna highlight what happened as a result of both the segregated schools, which took place prior to the 1960s, and complete desegregation in 1969. One of the things that you'll find that's most interesting is when schools were desegregated throughout the state of Florida before the education system created, the community college system that we have today, Collier Blocker Junior College was one of the Magnificent Twelve. There were 12 predominantly black junior colleges throughout the state of Florida during segregation. And those schools were created, and the school that we're highlighting today is Collier Blocker Junior College. It started out at Greater Shiloh Missionary Baptist Church, which is my home church, at 1000 North 19th Street in Palaca. That church needed a location. The pastor at that time was Reverend James A. Wright, and he agreed to let the church start there in 1960. Yet 59 students go in to Collier Blocker and start out there. So now, I'm gonna turn it over to President Pickens, and President Pickens will go ahead and give you more information about just what Collier Blocker means to this community and why it's so important to keep that heritage.
So what's in the name? Well, in this particular case, apparently quite a lot. And so I brought an excerpt from Dr. Walter Smith's book, The Magnificent Twelve, which chronologues the history of the 12 black junior colleges. It existed in Florida in the late 1950s into the mid 1960s, before they were all integrated and we had one single system. But the name originally was not to be Collier Blocker. And so I'm gonna read you this, because you can't make this stuff up. This actually really, really happened in Palaca, Florida, in 1958. The counties that were originally going to be involved included Flagler County, and at the last minute, Flagler County dropped out and Clay County came in. So we have this service area that we still represent today as St. John's River State College in St. Johns, Clay, and Putnam Counties. So, a split advisory group forwarded the name Pupla John Community College, Pupla John Junior College, to President Williams for his recommendation. They had combined the names of Putnam, Clay, and St. Johns Counties into an acronym-type structure. Nobody could pronounce it, and nobody could spell it, yet that's the name that went up to the State Board of Education. Fortunately, cooler and more sane heads prevailed in Tallahassee, something that doesn't necessarily happen these days, but in the 50s and 60s it did. And so the State Board of Education rejected the name Pupla John. State Representative Gator Beck from Palaca expressed his same feelings about the name. And then Dr. James Wattenberger, who was the father of the community college system in Florida, also said that no college will have that name, because not only will it be continuously misspelled and mispronounced, but it will cause legal complications in the routine operations of the school. So what did the school board do finally in order to determine the name? Something that they should've done in the first place. They asked the black leaders of the time to meet and decide who or how they wanted their college name. It was a very heated discussion, because there were some very deserving people. But ultimately, and just before the college opened, the name was created Collier Blocker. And you can see that Collier Blocker Junior College was named after two black educators, Dr. Nathan Collier and Sarah Blocker, and there they are, who had combined efforts to establish the first Florida Normal and Industrial College in St. Augustine. Collier Blocker Junior College offered classes from 1960 to 65. The last class graduated in the spring of 1964, and in 1965, the Collier Blocker campus was renamed the Collier Blocker Center and became a part of St. John's River Junior College at the time. Ultimately, the Collier Blocker campus was dissolved, and there was true and full integration of the white and black populations at St. John's River Junior College in 1966, along with all of the other 12. Interestingly enough, in some circles, the merger of the colleges was not popular. And not just stereotypically with the white population, but frankly, there was a big feeling within the black community that their identity would be lost, once the merger came and they went to the white school. And I think that frankly, they were right. Because for a number of years, that was in fact the case as the legacy and memory of Collier Blocker faded over the generations. The administration at the time was Dean Cleo Higgins and President Albert Williams. President Williams was given a very difficult, difficult task. He was named the president and told to open the school, and he had about six weeks to do so. And the mayor already talked about they found a place for it to be. Everyone cooperated to make it possible for Collier Blocker to open with 59 students in 1960. And students did indeed come from Clay County and from St. Johns County, and in fact, a few from Flagler County, in that inaugural class. Here's a picture of some of the first students that were in front of the Shiloh Baptist Church, as the mayor mentioned, the first home of Collier Blocker. Here is the welcome, and you can see this is the Viking horn from 1964, which talks about the St. John's River Junior College now administering Collier Blocker as the merger begins to occur. And so they are separate for a year before the merger becomes complete. Here are pictures of class officers in 1965. And for those of you that have been in Palaca a long time, some of the names are gonna be very familiar to you. And certainly for me and for the mayor, these are the parents of friends of ours, colleagues of ours, people that we played ball with and went to school with. And for me, as a school board attorney, people that I served with and their family members, who were all originally educated at Collier Blocker, many of whom went on to Bethune-Cookman to get their bachelor's degree, and many, in fact, went into the teaching profession. Here's also, they had a men's and women's senate, and here you can see them. And they also had student government. So they functioned just as we function today with all of the clubs and organizations that we have today, including, as I mentioned, student government. Here is, we had a dedication of the wall, and if you ever come to the administration building where my office is at St. John's, you'll see that we have the Collier Blocker Junior College wall. And it has many of, well, you can see the things that are on the wall, including the picture of the original president and some pictures. Some of the pictures that you just saw are actually on the wall there. These are members of the original classes who were still alive and here when we had the dedication of the wall on December 5th, 2012. And to the far left in the red shirt and jacket is Dr. Walter Smith, who had previously been the president of Florida A&amp;M University and is the author of the book that I mentioned, and who was the keynote speaker for that event. I'm gonna wrap this up quickly, because I reminded that. I went to Tampa to meet Dr. Smith and invite him to be the speaker. He was the only, he was the perfect person. And I told him that he had 15 to 20 minutes to talk about Collier Blocker. Dr. Smith used all 48 minutes. Dr. Smith used all 48 minutes of the 15 to 20 minutes that I allocated to it. That's why it was quite, quite an event. And then, here up in the top right was real, a real joy. These are relatives, descendants of Dr. Williams, including a sister who, a sister or a cousin who lived in Chicago and actually stumbled across the articles about the creation of Collier Blocker on the internet and came down to Palacka to meet me and to see, to see the Collier Blocker recognition. And so, I was a real joy to meet members of Mr. Albert Williams' family. Now, what I always say is that a wall is certainly nice. And it is important to me that when people walk into the administration building where the president's office is, that the first thing they see, before they can get to the president's office, is they see that, that Collier Blocker wall. And it grabs your attention and you can't help but gravitate over to it. But you'll see, in the very far right, with the gentleman in the hat and then the lady next to him, you can see what is a plaque. Now, that plaque has the names of all of the people who have received Collier Blocker scholarships since we created the scholarship program back in 2012. The scholarship comes with full tuition and books and a monthly stipend to help defer living expenses, and also a full-time mentor, who is a full-time employee of the college. Some are faculty, some work are staff, some are in administration. We make every effort to invest everything we can in making sure that the Collier Blocker students are successful. And so, for me, the real legacy, the real, true legacy of Collier Blocker Junior College is more than just plaques on a wall or on the back of a building. It's in the lives of the men and women who receive Collier Blocker scholarships, almost all of whom are from here, are going to live here and stay here after they complete their college, their college time, and are going to be invested in this community. So, it's a real pleasure to be out in the community. And someone sees me and they remind me that they were a Collier Blocker scholar. Many say, and I know they've said it to the mayor, as I've had the mayor speak, give an inspirational talk to the Collier Blocker scholars often, that they say, "I would never have been able to achieve what I did were it not for the Collier Blocker scholarship and what it offered me when I thought I had no resources." And so, here are some of the Collier Blocker scholars. Interestingly, some are recent high school graduates, but many of them are especially single mothers in their late twenties or early thirties, once, and forties. Once you qualify with a 2.5 or above for a Collier Blocker, then we don't look at the academics after that. We look at what people's circumstances are, we look at their need, we look at the desire of somebody to learn. And it's really, maybe not surprising, how many of the essays, they have to write an essay, start off with, "I made so many poor choices when I was a young person and now I'm having to make up for them and pay for them." I wish, you know, half, of half, I think, really, of the essays start off with, "I wish I had made some of the decisions that I made when I was 18, 19, 20, 21 years old." And so, you, if you come to a Collier Blocker reunion, you'll see that certainly there are some that came right out of college, like the young man that thought he was going to play football with Bethune Ryan. But also, men and women in their thirties, and as the mayor mentioned, forties, who are getting a second chance at an education through the Collier Blocker Scholarship. This was originally done for Collier Blocker and President Williams, but it's in the very back of the technology building, at the very back of the college campus, where frankly, nobody sees it. I had been the college president for more than two years before I knew that that was even there. And that was one of the motivations for me to more prominently recognize and remember all of the contributions that Collier Blocker made to this community during its existence. Here's another good picture of the entire Collier Blocker wall. And then, of course, part of this, and what I think one of the reasons the mayor invited me and I thank you for doing that, is we're celebrating the 60th anniversary now of St. John's River State College from 1958 to 2018. Frankly, for me, as you can tell, Collier Blocker is a huge part for me of the St. John's River State College family. Mayor, I can't thank you enough for allowing me to come and make this presentation to these young people and to their, to their parents. I really do appreciate it.
So, there's one thing that I don't want you guys to be, to be lost on, is, black history is not just for black folks. Black history is American history, it's Putnam County history. And Collier Blocker is a part of something that's so great in this community, and it's something that so many people miss, but it's a chance for folks who, we've got scholarship recipients outside on the committee since its inception, we've got scholarship recipients who sent their kids through school, single mothers who had three kids and never got a chance to follow their dreams, who now have fully paid college scholarships. And so, that they have an opportunity to move forward. We've got young people who lost their way in athletics, who now have full scholarships once they got back on the right track, and they've got an opportunity just to make it. And so, Collier Blocker, in so many ways, started out of controversy, but what it's done, it's preserved a very important part of education and history. Sarah Blocker and Dr. Collier founded Florida Normal, which is now Florida Memorial College, Florida Memorial University in Miami. And that school was in St. Augustine, there was a rich history in St. Augustine, particularly during the marches with Dr. King, and now it's become a very, extremely fast-growing university down in Miami. That history starts right here in Palacka. And we've got to understand just how important Palacka was to education. Because out of all of that that we talked about with Collier Blocker, Central Academy High School in Palacka was the first accredited black high school in the state of Florida and the pipeline for those kids that can improve. They're on the top, and we got to remember that history. And it takes having leadership like Joe Pickens to not have it in the back of the school, but to have it at the forefront, so that when children look at why they need to be proud, the proof is in the pudding, the history's there, and that's why we continually celebrate and continue the dream of Dr. Carter G. Woodson from 1947. So again, we want to thank, want to thank President Pickens for the great job. We want to celebrate 60 years of St. John's River State College, but we also want to celebrate Collier Blocker Junior College. And so, definitely, thank you again as well. Thank you. Our time wouldn't be well spent. I want to turn to Vice Mayor Brown, who's been around here on the commission for a number of years, but is a historian in her own right, particularly she's the historian for Florida Black Caucus of locally elected officials, a state organization, who memorializes history just like Collier Blocker. And I want her to say a few words. And if she can come down for me just for a second, I know she told me she didn't really want to do a bunch of standing, but I need her down here just for a second, just to talk a little bit about Collier Blocker.
He asked me, he started talking about Collier Blocker. And they talked about Florida Memorial College, which was in St. Augustine for many, many years. And as they brought up the name Sarah Blocker, I looked at our man and kind of laughed. I said, "I knew her." And people say, "Yeah, and I knew Professor Blocker too, because my mother taught at, at Florida Memorial College." In the 1930s, she got her master's degree from Columbia University and came back to Florida, where she was from St. Augustine, to teach. And she became over the English department and the practice teaching department. And for years, I ran into people that she had taught how to teach other people throughout the college, the years. There were the three schools that blacks could attend at that time, and one was the Thule, the other was Falmouth, and Florida Memorial. A lot of our teachers started out their education after they left Palacka High and went to Florida Memorial, and then later went to work on masters at the other schools so that they could extend their education. Ms. Blocker and Professor Collier were both very property in St. Augustine. I think they, after they moved the school, they took them up. But our family was a funeral home at that time, they took care of both of their services. And Ms. Blocker, as an older lady, my mother said they had to wear their, all their skirts to their ankles. Nobody could show ankles. And they had a very precise way of doing it. The college was very progressive. It had an indoor tennis court and an outdoor swimming pool, administration building, a library, two doms, a girls' and boys' doms, and another dom there for the teachers that worked there because they lived right on campus. And they had it where the train room, as they brought students from other places, stopped right down the road so those kids could get off and go back and forth to school at the time. It was very progressive and those people were really interested in educating us. It was a big part of the city of Palacka because a lot of our people left here and it was a place that they could go because the travel wasn't as expensive. So, Palacka has been a part of the history of the state of Florida for a period of time.
Before you leave, before you leave, let me just tell you a little bit about this lady. Since we're celebrating black history, one of the things you got to understand is, she is the first elected African-American official of Putnam County. First female elected African-American official in Putnam County. She's been on the commission for 34, 34 years, I don't know, there's a count on days as well, but she's been on the commission for that long. She serves on the Florida Fund, Florida Municipal Trust Funds Board, she's a member of the Florida League of Cities Board, she has served in every major capacity except for president within the Florida League of Cities, and she's turned down several opportunities to campaign for that position. But she's an icon in her own right, and I don't think that Palacka really celebrates what we have. Whenever we go places with the Florida League of Cities and we say Palacka, the first thing they say is Mary Lawson Brown. Mary Lawson Brown has been an advocate for this community for a very long time. 34 years on the commission is a very long time to be committed to your community. And so, for that, today, we want to make sure as we celebrate black history, that we are not, we're not going to miss out. It says, "Give them the flowers while they yet live." So, Mary Lawson Brown, you are truly a Palacka pride hometown hero, and the Palacka pride hometown hero award goes to you this time. And it's presented to Mary Lawson Brown in grateful recognition of your devotion to the advancement and success of the city of Palacka and Putnam County in community advocacy, Palacka City Commission and staff, February 22nd, 2018. You're our hometown hero.
I want to thank my commission. And I want to say, every time people get up and say stuff like this about me, I say, "Well, I'm having my obituary." I'm here. Thanks, thanks, and I appreciate you all.
Now that we've done our presentations, as always, we're going to cancel student of the month until next week. So, student of the month this month, I've got Commissioner McCaslin, who's going to join me as we make our presentations. And I want to make sure that we recognize that tonight, we're doing something a little different. We've got, and I'll let Commissioner Campbell let us know, there's a special treat for, one of the local businesses decided they wanted to do something special for young people. And they decided to give out some gift certificates to our, to our student of the month recipients. Mr. Campbell, tell them a little bit about that.
Twisted Treats is a newly started business here in Palacka. It's happened, started by my classmate at that time, her name was Mallory McNatt. She's now Mallory Kelly. So, she, she called me out of the blue and said she needed Mayor Hill's number and that she wanted to do something for our students and for being recognized. So, it's actually nothing that I've done, it was all between Mayor Hill and Twisted Treats. But it's a very delicious place, healthy, so if you have the opportunity, definitely stop by, patronize, have a party there. But on behalf of the commission, the city of Palacka, we truly thank Twisted Treats, Ms. Mallory, for allowing us, for giving us the opportunity to support her by supporting our people.
So guys, when you go to Twisted Treats, make sure you let Ms. Mallory know how appreciative you are, okay?
So, it's directly, it's on Creole next to CP Daily, in that little plaque.
And so, as we come up for student of the month, there's a couple things that we want to do, just to make sure that we, we continue on with just how important education is in this community. And in the back of the room, assembled all around are educators. There are educators and administrators who work every day, just as Commissioner Williams and Commissioner Campbell do within the school system. And oftentimes, we forget just to say thank you for the sacrifices that they make. And so, today, we want to make sure we celebrate our educators and we tell them thank you for the great job they've done. Thank you. We wouldn't be sitting here today if it was not for the family members, the extended family members, the parents, the grandparents, everyone who's taken a part in the upbringing of these young people. And so, all the family members and parents who are here today for the recipients, would you please stand so that we can give you a round of applause. So now, we'll move into our presentations. We will have a representative from the schools come forward with the students. As the names are called, we'll come forward, everyone will assemble across the front of the room. We will, once we get everyone called out, we will then take a recess to take photos of everyone who's received awards throughout this process at this point during the meeting. So, first up, we're going to go ahead and get started. And the first person from Browning Pierce Elementary is Lucas DeBegara. Lucas, you're the lucky recipient of me put your names every month. From Kelly Smith Elementary, Brayden Myers. From Children's Reading Center Charter School, Nabeah Williams. From James A. Long Elementary School, Walter Wilkinson. All right, Walter, we're waiting for the smile. From Chickens Middle School, Hannah Cruz Hernandez. Putnam Edge High School, DeShanti Bryant. Make sure we get DeShanti's award to her. From Mellon Elementary, Tatiana Gardner. Here comes number two. From Ozzie Elementary School, Bezalel Perez Perez. From Putnam Academy of Arts and Sciences, Sarah Magalones. How'd I do? See? I'm getting better. From CL Oberterre Sixth Grade Center, Mackenzie Hutchinson. And last but not least, for one man who's been to several city commission meetings, from the Rock Fellowship, from Palacka High School, Robert Session. So guys, again, we just want to thank you and tell you how proud we are of you, of the wonderful job that you've done and for what we know that you're going to do in the future. And I'm going to leave you with something, and I say it every month when we come here, and I've been saying it all week long, and something I learned in third grade, and I'm now 45 years old, I was eight at the time. And it simply says, "I am somebody. If my mind can conceive it and my heart can believe it, I know I can achieve it because I am somebody." Guys, we read articles in the paper all the time that talk about our community, but you guys are great and you're the future. But you guys are great and you're the future. And so don't let anybody tell you that you can't be whatever you want to be. Shoot for the stars and continue to be great, okay? So now we're gonna take a recess. We'll ask that the administrators step out. We're gonna take a picture for the newspaper. So we'll have all our recipients form two lines right here. Two rows right here for the newspaper. We'll cross the dais. And if you stand in turn parents, you'll have an opportunity to take photographs with your child if you want to. So it will be a recess so that you memorialize this moment. All right, that's where we gotta dip. To public comment, public comments will be limited to three minutes, Mr. Best. Three minutes for public comments to act, we'll take it on topic of discussions. If there's anyone here for public comments, please fill out the yellow speaker card so we'll have a record of you for today's meeting. First up, Mrs. Annie Best.
Hello, my name is Mrs. Annie Best. I live at two hundred Hayes Drive, Ithaca, Florida, three-two-one-four-eight. I'm here as good as sad occasion today. One person, therapist that worked in this county for about twenty-five years. It passed this weekend and Mr. Alex Sharp and through his tutoring and patience, we got started with developing this psychosocial patient. We're a rehabilitation center for people with mental illness. All you need to qualify to join this club is what a history of sometime in your lifetime having a mental illness. With this agency, we'll deal with everything that has to do with mental illness. Housing, food, clothing, transportation, study. We talk to each other. We make sure all your available services that are out there that you qualify for, we get them. It's so sorely needed in this county. And once this clubhouse opens up, you'll see Putnam County start to shine. This clubhouse model is around the world. It's all fifty states. It's in all fifty states. The closest clubhouse to us is in St. Augustine. Gayville, rather. It's a drop-in center in St. Augustine. But they're so far away. We need one here in our county here. Clubhouses do work. There are people walking the streets today with nowhere to go because they don't know what to do. If you have a mental illness, it's impossible, impossible for you to get through the stigma and what's in front of you to live a decent life. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Mr. Best. Anyone else here for public comment? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Moving on to the consent agenda. Everyone had an opportunity to review the events from the consent agenda. And the motion to approve all items. They're second by Commissioner McCaskill. Is there any further discussion?
What?
Questions called on paper, say aye. Close motion carries unanimously. Moving on to, I just want to make sure, before we move forward, I just want to make sure that you guys understand that there are two events scheduled at the riverfront at the same time during Azalea Festival. There's a three-day walk that also, that's for to be awareness that's never going to go out for past, it's gonna be scheduled at the same time as the Azalea Festival. We've already passed it, so we'll just hope that everyone can kind of work out.
I think that there has already been a conversation that happened between Ms. Matt as well as Mr. DeBegara. Only thing they're asking is that that area, I guess, the walk is completed by the time of the start of the parade, but outside of that, everything else should be going together.
Moving on to item number four, the agenda resolution authorizing the issuance of special events permit, number eighteen, that's seventeen, for the seventy-second. The Azalea Festival is setting forth provisions for the permit authorizing the closure of certain streets to deter traffic during festival events. Transiting exceed allowable noise levels, waiving the Class A special event application deadline and setting advance permit and other fees. Can we read the caption, please?
A resolution of the city of Palaca, Florida granting a special events permit to downtown Palaca Inc. for the two thousand eighteen Florida Azalea Festival, setting forth the provisions of the permit allowing foreclosure of certain streets to deter traffic during festival events, granting permission to exceed allowable noise levels, waiving the Class A special event application deadline and setting forth permit and other fees.
There's one on the floor in a second. Is there any further discussion?
Go ahead.
Questions called on paper, say aye. Close motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item five of the agenda, which is public hearing. Public hearing, the first one up is public hearing resolution transmitting to the Department of Economic Opportunity. The city's proposed amendments to its adopt comprehensive plan which is necessary to reflect changes in the state requirement as mandated by Florida Statute one-sixty-three-point-three-one-nine-one for adoption.
Resolution of the city of Palaca, Florida transmitting to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for review proposed amendments to the comprehensive plan of the city of Palaca which are necessary to reflect changes in state requirements which have occurred since the last city last updated its comprehensive plan. All is mandated by chapter one-sixty-three-point-three-one-nine-one, Florida statutes.
I don't understand the motion.
Still moving.
Sir.
This one's on the floor in a second. My vice mayor, Brown, will now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion?
Questions.
Questions called on paper, say aye. Close motion carries unanimously. Moving on, discussion of golf course advisory board. Ms. Trigger?
That's your city partner. The golf course has been under private management contract since last February. When I contacted the golf course manager, Mr. Hertz, about renewing the members of the golf course advisory board, there are four members who are appointed annually and one member that's appointed every three years. He said that they had not met in some time. The original purpose of the golf course advisory board, it's been in place for decades, was as a sounding board for golf course members to bring their concerns and their requests to in order to have those vetted before they came to the city commission. And there's really not been much of a reason to meet. They used to hold regular meetings, but they have not met in quite some time. And so the question now becomes, since they are now under a private management contract and the board, none of that actually comes to the commission because they are under a private management contract. The question is, do we want to continue with the board?
Also, the fact that they have their own association out there with membership, which has been very forthcoming to the commission as well. I think, you know, the advisory board's probably vetted, of course. Any comments?
Second, I don't see a need for, to have a board, especially if they aren't under contract.
So when does the last term expire?
Well, the three-year member, his term expires January in two thousand and nineteen. But if you sunset the board, then all the terms are expired. And right now, the one-year member's term's expired at the end of January.
Well, can we not look to people that's on that board to fill the other vacancies that we do have on boards in the city if they do? Let's have a communication with them, letting them know what the transition has been and see if they're interested in some of that other capacity.
Absolutely.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Move.
Can we hear a motion to sunset the board?
We need a motion to sunset. Let's not do it yet, only because of, let's make sure that, let's make sure that there are no concerns that need to be brought forward by the existing members of the board. And give them an opportunity to respond back first and we'll bring you back to the next meeting. Item number seven, qualified opportunity zones. Mr. Frederick Washington, economic development partner, monthly with consulting, LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon. Good to be back in Palaca. My name is Fred Washington. I once was in the capacity of working for the federal government and what I did in my former capacity was to let the city know about various funding opportunities that were available nationwide. So I am since retired from that position and if you forgive a smile, that's hard to mask. But I'm now in the private consulting area and I just wanted to let you know about my availability and willingness to keep you apprised even in my new, less stressful, less stressful capacity, to let you know. And I had an opportunity to meet with city staff earlier in the day about opportunity zones. And I see that as a wonderful opportunity to do mass development. I mean, incredible development. Every time I come here, I see something new that I like. I see a new business. I see now that the waterfront is developed. I see all these wonderful opportunities. And so I want to just, again, let you know that I'm available to discuss various opportunities in the future. And opportunity zones are one of the things that I did bring to the attention of the staff. And just very briefly, it involves designating four hundred and twenty, four hundred and twenty-five various zones around the state of Florida that are eligible for captured funds to do development. And so I just wanted to let you know about that and let you know how good it is to see it. All right now, I'm gonna take you up on that.
You got the same phone number or a different?
Same one, yes ma'am.
Any questions? So opportunity zones, just so that for the public, opportunity zones are akin to the new markets tax credits that we've talked about before. Those definitions will be put in place by the governor and it creates tax incentives for people to come into your community to invest. And so it is, there are only forty days left to get that done before March twenty-eighth. There's been an extension, thirty days based upon certain applications being in place. And so I think it creates an opportunity for people like ours that qualify to be incentivized for investors as they move forward. And it gives you a few more days that you don't necessarily get from the markets tax credits. So again, thank you, Mr. Washington, for coming forward. Always coming, coming back and forth to the city of Palaca to give us additional information that may be beneficial to us, no matter what capacity you're serving in. And so we thank you definitely.
Thank you, sir.
We look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you.
Good seeing you. Item number eight of the agenda, city manager and administrative reports, Ms. Robinson.
Ms. Commissioner Campbell actually has our reports, so I'll go back and take that.
Commissioner Campbell, do we need to save it for the end?
No, I'm just here on time. We are in the process of moving forward with our internship for this year. We've taken into consideration some of the things that the students from last year and the year prior spoke about. So we have developed an actual curriculum as well as some of the department head, gay feeding. So we actually created a curriculum this year that we're in the process of finalizing that will give the students a more intense, hands-on experience. Whereas last year, I think it was good, but each year we're trying to take it to another scale higher. So we are super excited about that. We look to have that information out no later than the latter part, the middle part of March. Ms. Robinson has been vital in that she has taken my gripes and complaints. And I think we are really gonna make this year one of the best years thus far.
One of the things that's been talked about and that we've all been engaging, other businesses who've heard about our internship program. And there are businesses out there now, there are other governmental agencies that are interested. And I think this is the perfect time for community partners who are willing to provide summer jobs for children, for our students, as an opportunity to really invest in them early. This is a great time to partner with the city as we move forward. We've already got some large corporations that are interested in bringing some kids on and I just want to continually applaud you guys for the work that you're doing. We're gonna move forward and try to get some of those partnerships that we had initially out in place so that we can get this thing done. So again, thank you guys. Chief? Sure?
Yes, sir.
So we'll move up to Mr. Griffin. You've had about ten meetings today, so. Your report tonight, sir.
Just a question. What is that, the boat, the boat house down there? Have an opportunity going in, kind of over.
Chip start?
We're still working on finalizing the last phase of the agreement. There's a current agreement in place. I believe Mr. Holmes is working towards getting a final agreement in place to bring in front of the commission. And I think they tentatively said they would be coming or trying to start operations sometime in April. I know they're still running a limited operation. They expect to run the boat during the Azalea Festival and they're still running some other special reserve trips.
Have we got the CO yet?
I'm sorry?
Have we got the CO?
Yes, sir.
How's the lighting system? Because I know I passed by a few evenings and lights were on. Is it an automatic light system or is it something that someone has to physically go in and turn off?
So everything is on the photo cell downtown the riverfront. So as soon as there's a certain amount of darkness, if you will, or you could actually go downtown and see different phases of the lighting turn on at different times based upon where they are with larger buildings. But everything's on the photo cell, sir, so it's on all night long.
Thank you. Lieutenant or captain, what do you have for us? We've got Lieutenant Brown here today. Good to see you.
Yes, sir.
How many days do we have till retirement?
Two-seventy-eight.
And Lou Kelly.
How you guys doing?
Great.
Captain Williams, Black Forest Park. Really not much to report. I'm really excited about this coming weekend, our last weekend for black ball basketball. So we have an opportunity to come out and it's the championship weekend, so it's the really good games. Not that they're all happening, but this weekend will be really good. And you'll also get the chance to see Commissioner Warren referee. He came out with us last week. You want to get a good chuckle, come see that at least. Yes, and we wrapped up the Chiefs Ball this past weekend. It was a huge success. We had, we had an amazing turnout. The event was, I like to call it peanut butter spoon because it was nice. And we look forward to it again next year. We've already talked about, talked about some of the things we can do to make it better, although it was pretty good.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Give our regards to Chief as well. Mr. Yule?
Sorry.
How's it?
I'll be real quick. I've just got a quick notice about a notice to proceed that the city manager signed today. The project is going to start Monday to install four thousand feet of taming fence on the southwest quadrant of the airport. So in case anybody asks you about that, let's see if trucks and equipment moving in and out of the airport. Just want the community to be aware. It's got an old fence with a lot of holes in it in the southwest quadrant that is being fixed starting Monday.
Thank you.
And that's all, sir.
Thank you, sir. Great job. Mr. Reynolds, I'll save you for last. Ms. Trigger's. We've got a new finance director here. I'll go ahead and let you introduce her, Mr. Reynolds. Maybe she can accompany you up to the podium as well.
Earlier this week, we offered the position of finance director to another local person from Palaca. This is Logan Becker. She comes to us from Florida State College of Jacksonville and she previously worked at St. George River State College under President Pickens. She will be finishing up her master's degree in accounting in the summer. And I think she's gonna do very well. Again, like I said, she's here for Palaca. It's good to see somebody get the same chance that I have and I think she's definitely gonna be better than.
chance that I have, and I think she's definitely going to be better than I was promised.
It's not as tall.
And I have my little body, so.
So, again, Ms. Becker, welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome to the family, we'll say that. So we look forward to just as many great things as we received from Matt over the year.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So, I want to add to that, Logan is going to be a breath of fresh air, I told staff already that the next finance director will not be six-six, so they understood that, and she graduated summa cum laude from Palaca High School, she's a local product, it's one of the initiatives that I had based on this recognition, is that there was a desire to bring opportunities to young people from Palaca who had gone on to college, but to give them opportunities to come back home and provide them with able, the ability to work and serve the community. Logan had been traveling back and forth between Palaca and Jacksonville for work, and so to be able to bring her home to this community, somebody who was reared in the budget school systems here in the City of Palaca, somebody who has gone on to college and achieved great things, her last position she was the Assistant Director of Budget and Judiciary Services for Florida State College, I'm excited by this opportunity to be able to provide to her, and a lot of it has to do with this commission, their desire to want to see young people have opportunities within the community, that was a focus of mine when we started looking for the finance director, not only somebody who's competent, not only somebody who had passion for the numbers, knew the numbers, but also somebody that we could make it happen, that was from the community, that was a local product. So being to bring the local product home, I'm very, very, very excited by it, by it. She'll be starting here on March twentieth. One of the additional things that I like that Logan did, Logan recommended, meaning to come once a week to do some transition things, today was her first day on her own dime, she's going to come once a week, use leaving her current job to be able to come back and start that transition process, I'm excited to have her here, earn Matt, our classmates, Matt has been helpful in terms of doing the transition process, and he has volunteered to continue in that process, so I'm excited to have Logan here with us, a hometown product of the City of Palaca.
Thank you.
Your mom is Shannon, right? I worked with her mom at St. John's River War, managed a number of years before leaving there, and I can attest that this young lady, she's going to be shining off, she's going to be grateful.
Matt, don't tell her anything about you heard down my request, this place is ten to ten. I'm fresh with her.
I have pictures to fill, the IT part, you know, we're transitioning, I'm excited, thank you for the opportunity, I appreciate it. I'll just say, after today, I see that vision for Palaca as something that I'm one hundred percent behind and excited about, and I'm just happy to be a part of this journey with
Has she bashed him before? Mr. Boardman's already taking his time off.
I got to walk, I got to walk Mr. Folsen as well, he's this for me, he's, we've already, maybe I came and stopped Matt, and I know, and welcome Logan, so that's pretty much all I have.
You got it? You, you're the thirty seconds you have left. Mr. McCaskill.
You know, I don't have too many much to say, however, I'm excited to say I'll be here with Aaron Russell of Florida League of Cities tomorrow and sharing here at the City Hall to see about initiating a new town from here in Palaca, so to be all the way.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, it's almost, just so you know, Palaca Panthers High School basketball team has a playoff game today, and it's always a wonderful opportunity for us to be able to celebrate our youth. Commissioner Campbell will give us his quick rendition of his closing minutes.
I've already said that.
He's done, very quick. Vice Mayor Brown.
Only thing I want to tell you, is welcome to our family, and we're better together, I always, that's what I tell the ones sitting here, and if you can stay a few minutes, folks here, I brought a cake, so we can welcome you all here, and you can take the cake, or smite home with you, so, we just want you to feel welcome.
What do you think about your award?
I think y'all shot me today, I'm.
Not today.
Almost, I got game back. I really appreciate it, thank you very much, because a lot of times we don't get a thank you, we get all the compliments and not a thank you, and I really love this commission, I tell them all the time, that they have been very supportive of me, and they take care of me like they should take care of old folks, and I appreciate it.
So, I'll tell you, Brown, in my closing comment, one thing I want to make sure that we do is we are mindful of the wisdom that comes, that we're surrounded by throughout all that we do, from the back of the room, historians such as Lame to Betsy, or institutional knowledge of the city, to Don Holmes and the same type knowledge, and your thirty-four years of excellence here with the city. We want to make sure that we just continue to say thank you, and that we continue to listen, I know sometimes it seems like some things are going to defuse, but they don't, because you're a shining example of what Palaca should be. Mr. Folsen.
I'm just in closing, thank you for this first meeting, thank you to all the staff that's here, I do want to get to the campus game tonight, so know that, it's not that I want to rush up to, but I definitely want to support them, we're being contacted by the commissioners this week, about time to set up one-on-ones with each of you, so if you and city know this week, or receive a bump on the block.
And so did you know Mr. Folsen came in here on the fifteenth, he's probably been popping in and out for the last few weeks, but when he came in, it's been some long evenings, he was here till about ten o'clock the other night, working, and, you know, Betsy, I think you may have somebody who's going to give you a rough three months.
Somebody who your own doors are left open, and I find that at midnight.
So, I can tell you, he's been coming in, he's been working, we've been, the day's been a non-stop day of work, and we're most, we're glad to have you here, and we are ready for festival season, and so, there's a good time out there, there was a credit of Blue Crab, the Blue Crab is back on, Azalea is back on, and we are rolling, March second is Mayor's reception at the Bronson Mahalid House, we are now adjourned.